All right, I'll call the meeting to order. Can we please have a roll call?
Ms. Krisham?
Yes.
Mr. Glavinger?
Here.
Mr. Patel?
Here.
Ms. Oliver?
Here.
Ms. Specter Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Unical?
Here.
And Shu?
Here.
The forum. All right, the first item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda. Before I ask for a motion for approval, is there any item anyone would like to have removed from the consent agenda for further discussion? In hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Still moved.
Thank you, Stacy, who's your second?
Second.
Thank you. Can we please have a roll call, Anna?
Ms. Krisham?
Yes.
Mr. Glavinger?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Ms. Specter Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Unical?
Yes.
Ms. Shu?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. Consent agenda is approved. All right, and next item on the agenda is the public comment. We have some students here from Deerfield. Those welcome.
Welcome.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the staff report. Kate?
Yes, so I have a couple of things on my report. Winter reading finished with, again, very high numbers. We've been seeing higher and higher numbers the last few years, which is great. We also have been seeing higher finisher rates. Typically, we expect to see about 50% of people that sign up finish. And this year, we saw 59% for the kids program and 63% for the adult, which is fabulous, because that means that more people are finishing, probably because you got a pretty sweet mug if you did. And so that is really wonderful. And now we are deep in the throes of getting ready for summer reading. Ah, I was gonna say the theme, I can do it. Read, renew, repeat.
Yeah.
Did I get it right? I keep wanting to say reduce, reuse, recycle.
Nailed it.
It's read, renew, repeat, and that would be really exciting, and that will be kicking off in June. We also had our teen finals, which ended up being a little bit extended due to weather. And I want to thank everyone who came and helped serve pizza. I know I mentioned this last month, but now officially, vice president of pizza, I think is what we're gonna do.
Yeah.
So yes, but you can also, I think, Princess Antigone.
I would need a tiara to be Princess, and I can't.
Maybe make that happen. But it was really wonderful to have all of the students back in again, and this is something that we are excited to see coming back full swing after the pandemic. There is talk at the high school of switching finals to before the winter break. So if that happens, that we will also still feed pizza and encourage kids to come in and study here. So we are anxiously awaiting what happens at the District 225 board meeting, which they anticipate talking about that later this spring. Also, part of 225, I was asked to be one of the community members involved in the District 225 strategic planning process. One of the things, so we had two days earlier this month where students, teachers, parents, and community members were present and talked through the different reports. What was really interesting to me was that there was a lot of similarities in what the students reported, what the parents reported, and what we found in our community surveys. It shouldn't be that surprising, because it's the same community, but there definitely was a lot of overlap, talking about, you know, pathways after high school beyond college, mental health awareness, lifelong learning, and just kind of finding good balance for students and not having them be too overwhelmed with school. So I'll be participating in, they have another workshop in April, and then I believe the plan will be brought to the board in June. So it's exciting that, seems like everyone is doing strategic planning. There are some, hopefully, going to be great opportunities for some cross-collaboration where we can do some more community-wide things, which I think will be really wonderful, especially in the areas of mental health and wellness for the students. We know that that was something that we also saw a lot in our senior population, and I brought that up at the two-day workshop that we had at 225, because I do think that there is, it is not just a uniquely high school problem, nor is it a uniquely senior problem. I think it is a uniquely people problem, and there's some opportunities there that I think we'll be able to hopefully work with other units in the village on. We also have, coming up, our March Oscar movies. I have made a pledge to watch all the Oscar movies this year, which I'm regretting a little bit right now, but we will be showing a number of different Oscar movies in March and also in April, including Barbie and Oppenheimer, we'll be doing The Color Purple. These are always our most heavily-attended movies. We do multiple showings, and Margot Hill, who is one of our adult services librarians, does a great job of, she has to kind of predict what will be an Oscar, and always does such a great job of figuring that out. So if you are interested in attending any of those, I strongly recommend signing up. Newsletter's dropped, and so people are starting to sign up already, and those will be coming up in the next month. And then I also wanted to show you something that Kim Hegeland, our CIRC manager, has been working on. One of the things, and I know Amanda Standifer mentioned this when we had the retreat for the strategic plan, but one of the things that we, let me just go back there, that we know is that we have about 50% of our users have library cards. And so I asked Kim to work with our CCS, our computer consortium, to see, like, what does the market penetration look like? And the good news is, is the market penetration is really good in terms of cardholders, because what I felt like was, we have a lot of people that only use one card per household, not to pick on Stacy again, but you and your husband are a great example of that, as are others, I'm sure. And so this shows that, as you can see, we don't have any large gaps in area, except in the areas that you would expect, because they are, you know, village green and.
So can I go back, because when you say 50% of our users are cardholders?
50% of the 35,222 people that live in Northbrook have a Northbrook library card.
Okay, so 50% of our population.
Population, sorry.
Got it. Okay, that makes sense. Okay, got it, got it, so 50%, okay.
Yeah. What we also know is that in, if I can get my, I have a new computer, and it's a little, in, this is how many people have used, so we have about 15,000 households, and in the last 30 days, this is how many people have used the library to check out an item. This does not include people that have come to programs, or people that have come in and used the computer, or just come in and sat and, you know, read a newspaper. So we're still working on getting some additional numbers to pull with these, but what this says to me, I was a little worried about, you know, the cardholder rates, but this shows me that we have people actively using the library. We aren't experiencing gaps because of it being too far away. What we're seeing is people are coming in, and coming in regularly. It's not like, oh yeah, they were in once in the last year. We had 10,000 different cardholders come in and check something out in the last month. So that, to me, is a good sign of the usage that we're seeing.
Does this take into account Libby or Press Reader?
No.
Oh, wow.
This is just people physically coming in and checking out an item. Yeah, or renewing something, but yeah, so it does not, which is even more, that's one of the things that is a little bit more challenging. Each system has its own reporting software of getting them to talk to each other, so we can see how many people come in and check out, and come in for programs, and only use e-resources. But even, yeah, that is one of the things that CCS has in their strategic plan to be working on, is to allow for more cross-integration with some of those metrics.
Is the word Northbrook is in the middle?
Yes.
Should there be more homes in the area, or?
Is that the village green? No.
No.
This is.
Jay didn't check out something.
Oh, that's so.
This is us.
Oh, okay.
This is the library and Village Hall. Okay, so the library is right here.
Oh, okay.
And then this is where, like, Ace and Marcello's is.
I thought you were further east there, okay.
Sorry, yeah.
I'm sorry, further west.
Yeah.
And the different colored dots is unincorporated?
Yes, correct, which is why you'll see those, oops, sorry, on, like, up here, because those are the unincorporated areas.
Okay.
So.
It's a great visual.
I know, right? Yes, so, he's still cleaning it up a little, but we'll be sharing this more broadly, but I got it a couple of days ago, and I'm like, oh, I'm gonna show this to the board, because this looks great. So, so yeah, that's, that is Northbrook library use.
Awesome.
And that was everything I had for my report, but I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone had from anything else in my report.
All right, no questions.
Okay.
Next item on the agenda is board member reports. Is there anything a board member would like to report?
I would like to compliment, I'm sorry, I don't know the names, of the people who put together the newsletter. I was so proud to see that newsletter. It not only was visually and graphically beautiful, it was so rich in content and programs and potential opportunities. I mean, we were signing up left and right, because everything was so appealing, so please extend that.
I will, I will definitely send the thanks to Linda Varing, who's our marketing manager, as well as Princess, who is our graphic designer, and both of them work very hard, as does everyone, everyone in the library takes a pass at decorating, and so.
And the article on mesh was, wasn't it?
Absolutely outstanding. I mean, it's easy when you have good content to work with, as anyone that has read any of our wonderful features.
I drafted off of Janet.
Yes. Well, talk about appealing, appealing content or programming. I, the, I had the pleasure of attending the Christopher Loughlin guitar concert on Sunday, and it was hopping. I mean, it was jammed gels in the auditorium, which was nice to see, and fabulous concert. People seemed to really enjoy it, and I wasn't the staff person who was managing it. She was very funny and, you know, very good at what she was doing, and I think everybody had a really good time, so.
That would have been Madison.
Yeah, brilliant, so.
Right, anybody else?
Just a quick comment. I don't remember if it was last month or this, probably was last month, but there was like one big snowstorm so far this year in Northbrook, and I think your folks did a really nice job of just making the library very accessible, because I feel like I came later that afternoon, and, you know, kudos to making it easier for people who are trying to make it here, even with inclement weather.
Well, thank you, and we will definitely pass that thanks along to our facility staff. They work with Anna and Snow Systems, who does our snow removal, to make sure that if people do decide that they want to venture forth, they can do so safely.
I think it's also sort of like you have everyone making their grocery store runs before a big snowstorm. I think people make their library.
Oh, absolutely. Yep.
Anybody else? All right, next item on the agenda, we're going to unfinished business and update on the tour. Anna, this is all you.
Yay. The attorney approved the contract. Kate signed the contract, and so did Thermo Systems. They came out on Monday of this week, and they removed Module 3 so that we could send it to Multi-Stack and Slep, the manufacturer of the heat exchanger, for forensic testing. It'll take three to four months to get the results on that, but then the parts have been ordered, and it's about a 13-week lead time, so we're looking at May to have the chiller repaired. So we're moving along, yay.
Yay.
Anna, a quick strategic plan update.
Very quick. As you all know, because you met with the strategic plan consultants on the 20th, we are working on putting together the draft plan. The manager and assistant managers met this week with Amanda Standifer from Fast Forward Libraries to look at things, and we, the next steps are to finalize the strategic directions and put together some draft goals for the board to review at the, hopefully at the March meeting. And then after that, the staff, once the board approves the directions, you know, tweaks, anything you want to tweak, approves the directions and goals, we will then work on an implementation plan and hope to have everything ready to launch with our new strategic plan in the new fiscal year.
All right, so the next item is the annual facilities walkthrough. So we do a quick walkthrough, I'll find this equipped, but of building to go over recent projects and highlight future needs based on a facility plan and 2018 master plan. Recent projects are the steam boiler, chillers, the elevator. Future work is reconfiguring AMH interior book drop and the CIRC workroom, ABS controls, parking lot landscaping. And the master plan projects include on the second floor, the tween area, young service, youth services, and then the third floor staff areas, interior of the second floor, and the third floor patron area. There you go. Matt? All right, so question for you, Kelly. Have you considered putting digital locks in or looked into it?
We have looked into putting in a FOB system, and that is something that would really streamline processes for us. We have multiple keys for multiple doors, and so that was something, back in November 2022, we had done an RFQ for a consultant and did not find any, we didn't get any viable bids on that, and so that project was put on pause, and we need to do that in smaller chunks. So security cameras, FOB system, our security alarm system needs upgrading. All of those are projects that we need to work on.
I've become obsessed with.
We are going to look at Amnia to see if they can help us because of the issues we had with doing the project in 2022.
Since everything is already pre-bid and approved, as lowest responsible bidder. Kind of my favorite thing.
So before we move on, anybody have questions about the tour? Anyone that wanted to? Well, that ends the tour. The next item on our agenda is executive director evaluation. We're not going into closed session for this, because Kate has provided her self-evaluation that we are going to review for discussion at our next meeting, a part of which we had discussed previously. So, just to give this self-evaluation, for March, each library trustee should complete an evaluation form and discuss, and as a whole, we'll discuss in the final evaluation marks and comments at the March 4 meeting, and then we'll create a detailed evaluation form based on our discussion. In April, we'll finalize the evaluation, review compensation, suggest potential goals for the coming year, and then the board president and vice president will meet with Kate to review the evaluation, and she will be given the opportunity to ask questions, respond to issues raised in the document.
And this month, I did also have the completed new evaluation form, so if anyone had any questions on it, the goals were the same, but I added the observable outcomes, which were not there last month. So if you have any suggestions, it certainly is something that can be adapted and adjusted.
You did a great job. It's not so easy, and it was reshaping the whole thing, so.
Thank you.
Questions before we move on about the process? Okay, next item is new business, and the first item of new business is the steam boiler change orders. Anna's gonna discuss the memo that was in the packet.
So in the packet, I put in a memo that kind of described the issue. We signed a contract with Effie Moran to replace the steam boiler. They did some of the work, and then after the work was completed, they sent me a change order for 22,000, over $22,000. Let me back up. At the beginning of the project, I said, no surprise change orders, any change order you need to, you know, talk to me about before the work is completed. There was one kind of iffy thing, and that was the placement of the steam boiler, but that was known at the beginning and reiterated, no surprise change orders. They placed the steam boiler, no work was done, and it was placed in a new location, not according to the drawings, but there were, you know, nobody came and said there were any change orders, and I went into the room two or three times a week and said, hey, is everything going good? Yeah, everything's great. And then I got a surprise change order of over $22,000. I was very upset. We, I had communication with Effie Moran, it took months to get, we had, they came in right away, we had a meeting with the engineer of record, which is Calore Design, Effie Moran and the library staff. Then there was a long period of time before somebody higher up at Effie Moran came, and we had another meeting, and he said, oh, that change order isn't right, we're gonna be revising it and getting you a new one. And I said, okay. I go, I would really like a breakdown of what was included in the original bid and why you're charging me additional funds, because, in all honesty, it didn't make 100% sense. It wasn't like there was work done, and then they had to change it, if the work hadn't been done at that point. So then that meeting happened in July, and we got a revised change order in September for $8,700, approximately $8,700, and, but they never were able to provide me with the breakdown from the original bid to how they came up with that. I didn't get that information till December. And then we talked to the attorney about what we should do, and the attorney recommended that we ask the board if Kate and I can talk to Effie Moran to negotiate the change order to a lower amount.
So you would like us to approve your negotiating?
Correct.
Right, but not for any particular dollar amount, just so you can negotiate and come back to the board?
To try, to try to bring it to a lesser number, but not to pay any more than the amount of the change order that exists, which is $8,750. And I guess, do you want us to bring it back to the board, or do you want us to just negotiate? I mean, the check would definitely have to come back to you, because it would be an amount that would need to be signed, but do you want to approve it before, or is it okay? So, okay.
Kate and I talked about it, we don't want to put some number in the minutes that can be reviewed and then used against you in the negotiation.
Okay. So Kate and I will have that conversation with them, and they are aware that I was bringing it to your attention at this meeting.
I got a question. I just, when you finally got the breakdown, were you satisfied with what they were saying?
No, I mean, they, obviously, they did additional work, and maybe they had to buy extra piping. I guess I don't think that the labor number should have been different, but I do maybe agree with the piping numbers being different, but, so, I think it's, you know.
Was there a contingency in part of the bid, or no?
Excuse me?
Was there any contingency in the bid?
There was no contingency in the bid. This was a straight, you know, it was 145.5.
And their bid was lower.
Than other bidder?
By substantial, so.
Yeah. Even if we had to pay, when we have to pay this 8,700, and, and the additional 37.54, which was a safety-related change order that was, has been approved, and it's still less than the other bidder, just to, you know, to be clear.
And they're Northbrook-based, huh?
They are Northbrook-based.
But ultimately, you had like a contract and a statement of work, and so since.
Correct.
Yes.
And the contract clearly states that there were to be no, no work done unless prior approval was granted for a change order, which obviously did not happen.
Yeah, so it makes complete sense that it's perfectly legitimate for you to go back and look through the details of why they went beyond it. It's a cost ultimately that should be borne by folks that can't.
If they violated the terms of that.
Correct. But the cost to take action on that, given the cost that it is, doesn't really make sense, even though we are 100% in the right.
But it's PR. I mean, if they're Northbrook-based, they're dealing with the Northbrook Public Library, I would think that they would be smart enough to not want to develop ill will or cut off.
Same company that we're having issues with the chiller with. You would think that, wouldn't you?
Mm-hmm.
Disappointing.
It's a coordinated control system that has labor, material, everything mapped out, and if it, they weren't able to meet it within the context of what the statement of work is, then they're responsible for the problems.
At least communicating that. I mean, I'm not, I'm not arguing, but they needed to communicate it before the work was done. Like, we need to buy this additional piping, and it's going to be this many additional hours, like, they needed to be able to spell that out, and they did not.
Yes. And it's disappointing that they first issued a $22,000 and then that it was cut almost two-thirds.
That's smart.
Out any rationalization.
Any other questions?
I was waiting to see if you had a question. So is there a motion to authorize the executive director and finance and operations director to negotiate with Effie Moran on the outstanding change order for presentation at our next meeting?
Still moved.
Are they here? We have the second. I think we need a roll call now.
Ms. Krisham?
Yes.
Mr. Glavinger?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Ms. Specter Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Unical?
Yes.
And Shu?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hey, motion passes. No, you're not off the hook yet.
I know.
Next item on our agenda is the draft budget review. So Kate and Anna will do the presentation on the budget, and we'll go over the projects incorporated into the plan. We will be approving, hopefully, the budget at the March meeting.
Yes, hang on, sorry. Computer. It turned off. It's.
The Bangl technology, huh?
I know, right? I got a new computer yesterday, and it's not quite getting as I wanted to. Okay. So Anna and I are gonna share the presentation. I'm gonna start by talking about considerations, and then she's gonna take over and talk about revenues and expenses, all of which are in your packet. So considerations really is just like, what do we look at and think about in putting together the budget? And so the first thing with this upcoming one, which is a little bit trickier this year, is our strategic plan initiatives, given that we do not have a fully fledged strategic plan yet, but we have seen some draft things, and after sitting in with the staff and board sessions, have some ideas about some of the things that will be coming. We do know that we will, wow, what happened, Google? It did not look like this when I. Anna, can you show them your pretty pictures? It looks perfect. But obviously, we will be continuing our equity, diversity, and inclusion work and anticipate having some initiatives as part of that, and Anna will talk a little bit more about that when we get into the revenues. I believe all of the board members, maybe not everyone, I feel like 90. I feel like 95% of the board members mentioned the need for a website redesign. We wholeheartedly agree and had planned to have that part of this next year. So we have that as part of the work that we'll be doing. We also have been looking at safety stuff and I'm going to actually ask Kelly. She, there is some stuff included in the memo, but we've been working with a couple other libraries on safety stuff. And I know she talked about it briefly already, but just to recap again what we're doing.
We are working with a couple of other libraries on an interlibrary cooperation to work with a security consultant. And we're very early in the process, but we have identified a consultant who's worked with schools and also large event. And they're a national company called Joffe Security Services. And we really like, they have a very human-centered approach to security. And so I've been meeting with Glenview and Highland Park Library administrators to kind of think about what it would look like to have a company come to Illinois and use our libraries and probably some others in the area as a test case to build out consulting security services for libraries. So we're, we're a little ways out from wanting to pay anybody and having a plan and a proposal of exactly what this would look like. But it's, it's definitely something that we're working toward over the next year and would probably fall into the fiscal year '25 budget. And then as Jay had asked earlier, we also put some funds aside for security cameras, the alarm system and the access control system in the draft budget as well. And actually, the access control system has the highest cost associated with it because of how many doors are in the building and, yeah. All the work that would go with that, so.
Yeah, thanks, Kelly. We also, as we walked through the building tonight, know we need to review the master plan and anticipate there being work that we're going to want to do. Again, this comes as part of the capital improvement plan, but that is something else that we know we need to get started again, thinking about how do we continue upgrading our building to meet the needs of our users. Other things that we're seeing that we need to pay, continue to pay closer attention to, insurance costs continue to increase, especially in the realm of cybersecurity. Our, we also have medical and dental insurance envisioned. That has been increasing, but not as much. The liability continues to increase and is something that Anna works very closely on with our insurance broker to keep in line. But that's something that we always look at as part of this process. Personnel lines, as you may recall, last year we did a large salary benchmarking project and looked at everyone's salaries. We made a number of adjustments then with average increases being 14% increases for staff. This year, we're continuing that work that we started last year with the benchmarking, with the goal of being in line with our compensation philosophy, which has us hiring people at the pay target, which is the midpoint of the range. And so we still have staff that are below that, so we'll be working on increasing them to that and then also making sure that we're keeping up with the inflation and cost of living adjustments. We're continuing to see material costs increase. As I've mentioned in previous years, one of the big pain points during the pandemic was the number of manufacturers that stopped producing paper and switched to cardboard. That has driven the cost of books up. And so if you look at the, you know, jacket, you know, where you used to see $20, $25, you're now seeing 28, 30, 35. Those costs all impact us. In addition, we have our e-resources, which continue to be charged to libraries at a significantly higher rate than the average consumer, ranging anywhere from, you know, $20 to up to $100, $120 for a single copy of an item. If we're buying multiple copies, you can imagine how quickly that adds up. We also are seeing higher demand. We've been hitting close to, we hit a million CIRCs and then we were just under a million last year. Where we saw in the community survey that people are like, we want, you know, more copies faster and we want to provide that for people. We currently spend about 12% of our operating budget on materials and that is what Anna has budgeted, just under 12% for this year. And that is something, though, that we continue to keep an eye on because that is the core of what we do, right? Is providing access to materials. And we want to make sure that we can meet the demands of our community. And as you saw in the map, people are coming in and checking out stuff. It's not, it's, and it, and that doesn't account for the e-resources. So we want to make sure that we have set aside sufficient funds to meet that demand and to have a, we want to be both wide as well as deep. We want to have a wide variety of materials, but not just the surface level, be able for people to get to deeper levels, but also have enough copies of things. So it's a constant tension of balancing all of that and having the funds to be able to meet our, our very voracious, wonderfully voracious readers in this town, which is an awesome problem to have. Programming is something that we still continue to see fluctuations in while our numbers are still down from what they were pre-pandemic. That's mostly because we're just not offering as many. The programs we do offer, well, as Janet mentioned, with, you know, the Christopher Loflin concert, that was jam-packed. We have our Lunar New Year program coming up, which is completely booked. We continue to see people really actively engaging in programming, but we also are finding that we now have people that only want to do in person, only want to do virtual or depending on the time of year, want to do one or the other. So making sure that we have funds set aside. And thanks to the generosity of our friends, it is much easier to do that because they regularly donate tens of thousands of dollars a year to help support the programming, which means that we can allocate that money in other areas in the rest of the budget. Just like our. It must be, the clock must be wrong. We also, in addition to our facility getting older, that means that all of the materials, furniture and equipment in it. And so we, Anna has a fixed asset list that we review annually to make sure that we are upgrading things so things aren't looking shabby, that we're keeping things, even if we've not done a full upgrade as part of the master plan, we still are upgrading the furniture and equipment throughout the building to meet the heavy, heavy usage of butts and seats and other things. And technology is, of course, something that is an ongoing need where we have our technology replacement plan that Kelly reviews with OSG annually to make sure that we are upgrading our switches and our servers and our laptops and our other computers, as well as doing the larger projects, like the cabling project we did a few years ago. So there's the, we're always looking at the, what do we need now? And also planning for the long term every year when we look at the budget. So those were most of the things that we looked at. And Anna's going to take us through where we're getting our money from and what we're going to spend it on.
So back in the fall, the board approved a 3% tax levy increase. So that's where 90% of our revenue is coming from. The other funds we get come from replacement taxes, fines and fees, and that's mostly lost materials, interest income. We do have designated revenue and that's like donations that people will make to us, but that number has gone up considerably because of Illinois Library Presents. And we're getting the money from the other libraries to help, to pay, to cover the expenses that's related to that program. So that's where our revenue is coming from. Does anyone have any questions? What? So then this is by GNI MRF and this is primarily property taxes. We have a little bit of interest income that, for this fund. Debt service, this is according to the debt service schedule. So that's part of the tax levy as well.
And the debt service, just for, because I don't, since Janet and Nimesh were not here when we took out the debt, this includes debt that we took out in the 2015 for the renovation of this room, Pollock, and the auditorium, as well as in 2019 for the, some of the master plan renovations.
And so then, this is capital improvement fund and we, we do not levy for this fund, but we do, we do allocate some funds from the operating fund to kind of help with the maintenance of the building. So that's where that $425,000 is coming from. And then there is some interest income associated with this fund. So this is the total revenue of all the funds, almost 11 million, almost $12 million, 11 and a half. And then in the operating fund, like we said, we have CIF and debt service. And the debt services, we don't collect 100% of all the property taxes. So we just want to keep that fund at zero. So we will have the operating fund cover whatever property taxes are not collected so that it's always even. Okay, so now we go to the expenses. With personnel and like Kate had mentioned earlier, we are going to continue to implement having staff paid at the pay target as well as making sure their compensation is.
We're adjusting the salary schedule based on the cost of living adjustments.
Cost of living and then that it's comparable to other libraries as well. We, you know, we don't want, we want to make sure that the librarian, the staff is being paid fairly in relation to other libraries. And then we have our fringe benefits. We have group insurance. We have unemployment insurance, workers' comp and, or not, yeah, unemployment, workers' comp insurance and then staff development. And that is funds allocated to have like, staff participate in ALA and ILA. Like I participate in the accounting ones. Lori participates in HR-type ones. Allowing staff to go to conferences, both locally and out of town. ALA has an annual conference. ILA has an annual conference. The PLA has a conference every other year. They'll have one in 2024 and then the next one will be in 2026. This also covers like our staff day when we have that, the day of training for staff and also the half-day trainings that we have throughout the year. And it covers our fishing, training. I'm trying to think what else is in there, just any kind of training.
And travel costs to anything. So, right, we pay mileage for people to go to.
Right.
You know, meetings, to do our home delivery service, to do books on wheels. All of that is covered in there as well.
Kate talked about materials and programming. We try to keep materials at around 12%.
And the state rec, I should have mentioned this in mind. The state recommendation is to keep materials 8% to 12% of the budget. So we're at the top end of it. So we're in, you know.
Programming, so programming went up, has gone up a little bit because staff is using third-party contractors so that they can focus more on materials and assisting patrons when they're in the building. So that number has gone up a little bit to help allocate funds to that. Office and library supplies has remained consistent over the years. Software, this is for Microsoft. The Microsoft packages, we have Google, basically any type of software, Adobe. Our, the website software.
Hosting.
Yeah, our hosting. So that's.
That's what, that's what's included in software?
One of the things that we were looking at this year with the software is just, we have seen, we continue to see software, you know, increasing because so many software companies have switched from, yeah, to subscription models. So you can't just buy the Adobe Creative Cloud and load it, you know, buy a disk and load it onto a computer. You now have to pay for the upkeep and you get it always up to date. But that does. Of the software companies. But it does mean that there are added costs.
Postage has remained consistent and the biggest expense of this is the newsletter. Costs that are associated with mailing the newsletter. Community relations, this is related to outreach and the actual printing of the newsletter. That's the majority of this account. And then janitorial supplies has remained consistent for quite a few years.
I'm not using more toilet paper than they were.
And then we have contractual services. So OCLC and CCS, I should say CCS, not ILL, I'm sorry. Those are the cooper, the cooperatives that we're a part of that help, that allow us to. Get books, share materials, thank you. I was going to say get books from other places. So photocopy is the copy machines and our lease is coming up this year and we are not going to be getting new copy machines. We're going to be buying out the copiers. So we're going to be doing that. So that's why that number went down a little bit. General insurance, as Kate mentioned, that number keeps going up, but it's our auto insurance, cyber insurance, director and officers insurance, our umbrella policy and just general liability. Telephone and internet is for our VoIP system and then any backup internet services that we have and the overall internet in the building, which I think we discussed. We are right now in an intergovernmental agreement with District 225. And because of the, how they can get their internet, next year, we're going to have to be finding.
The legislators passed a lot that they get it for free. We're working on getting it for libraries too, because that seems absolutely fair.
So, so we're, right now, we're still working with District 225. Professional services, this would include the website. This is where the website redesign is included. It's all of our EDI work, strategic plan, attorney, auditor. Professional services, graphic design, or not graphic design, but the photographer, that's where all of that comes from. Equipment rental and maintenance expense. This number increased a couple of years ago because of the maintenance agreement on the AMH. And so it's just those types of maintenance agreements for equipment. Vehicle expense, we have a trail blazer that is quite old, but is still working, so we're going to keep it for as long as we can. But the purchase of a new vehicle would come out of CIF. As long as we can keep this one running, we will.
Is that the one that Chad was driving?
Yes, that is the one that Chad was driving, so.
The 2007, I believe?
Yeah, it will be a very sad day.
It is still considered, that staff still call it the Chadmobile.
So.
Chad was the previous director who retired.
And to be quite honest, it, there aren't, we did have to do some repairs on it just recently, but for the most part, it's, yeah, it's, it runs very well.
And that is what we use to do all of our books on wheels deliveries, not all of our home deliveries. So the books on wheels are the multi, multi-bag drop-offs to different senior living facilities. So the books on wheels are the multi, multi-bag drop-offs to different senior living facilities that happen every month. So facility staff make those rounds and do those drop-off and pickups with it.
Utilities is mostly gas, but it's also garbage and composting services that we do. Building repairs, this is just a small number so that it doesn't have to come out of the capital improvement fund. So it's, sometimes I just put it straight into the capital improvement fund and then we just leave this number alone. Contracted services would, includes the cleaning company, window washing, carpet cleaning, snow removal, the security system, that type of work. And then recruiting, we always just put some money here in case we need to pay a fee to post a job ad or do anything.
Like we posted to SHRM for the HR director posting and so that was, you know, a couple hundred dollars.
And any background checks go to this line for staff and volunteers. So.
With the new HR director, do you think that that individual may be looking for some budget for recruiting beyond $1,000 as sir?
I don't think so because, you know, most of the, you know, there are, the avenues that we normally post on through rails and whatnot are free. I think the HR director, because we were trying to go outside of libraries and get a broader base of candidates, that, that is why.
We don't seem to have an issue with, you know, with getting a large pool of candidates. So I would say that, I mean, of course, anything is possible with whoever we end up hiring, but I would be very surprised because that doesn't seem, there doesn't seem to be a, oh, well, we're really struggling to get qualified candidates. I mean, we got a really robust pool, most of which came from Indeed for the HR director. So I don't think, but that certainly is something that if we need to, we can always consider for next budget year. I'd be surprised though.
So furniture and equipment, a majority of this number is our technology replacement plan. And then we do have some funds in there for minor things throughout the building. A majority of the furniture, like if we were going to replace shelving or something like that, that is all part of the master plan expense and so that's going to come out of capital improvement. But we do have some funds in there to, if we need to get a new chair or a table or something like that throughout the year. And then other contingency is just a catch-all, just in case we needed money for something that we didn't have earmarked someplace else. And then board development for you guys to do your trips to other libraries or fun stuff for staff. And then the designated expenses, it, the number equals the designated revenue, like it's just a wash, whatever is in the revenue is in the expenses. So that number went up because of the Illinois Library Presents expenses. And we have the transfers to debt service and CIF, just to make sure that those funds are covered. And, you know, it's nice that we're able to do this so that we don't have to go out for a bond issuance when we do need to talk about the master plan and the chiller replacement and that kind of stuff. So it's nice to have that safety net in the capital improvement fund.
It's a safety net with a plan because we do have.
Right, we do have a plan and it, yeah, and it's earmarked, yes.
So we know exactly like what is coming in terms of the needs and the approximate costs.
Yeah.
So here are the way the expenses break down. Questions?
Yeah, I've got a few comments. First of all, that was a nice summary and framework and explanation of all of the things. I won't be here for the next one, so I just want to give some ideas if that's okay. I really liked Kelly's idea with the consortium of libraries to come together to figure out some of the security system stuff and I think that's a really good idea. Getting a consultant, don't forget that you might have an opportunity and you also mentioned it with the internet. So that and the internet was in District 225. There could be grants available and the consultant that you work with should investigate that because that could be a really good opportunity, whether it's federal or state or something, whether it's at consortiums. So in both examples there, there could be grants available. So I think that's something to consider. The other one is across society, every company's challenged with the health care and the benefits and pharmacy benefits and the stuff that you were talking about. You have a broker, I think it's a good idea to consider a consultant.
We actually are part of a cooperative with governmental entities.
So the broker is for the liability insurance and then we're part of IPBC for our health insurance.
Okay.
But that is something that we do need to do a deep dive on and we're waiting for the HR director to come. I do think that there is some opportunities there for cost savings.
Sometimes just under NDA, you get a consultant, they do a free analysis. That puts the brokers in a position to be very honest and it allows you to do what you need to do to keep your costs manageable and.
So, but the healthcare is, we're part of a co-op for, and it's all municipalities. And so we are actually part of the villages plan, but we're cut out as the library. So like they don't tell us what to get, but we're in this IPBC co-op as part of the village.
So Nimesh, what I'm hearing you talk about is having an outside consultant who could do an analysis for us that would help us potentially look at lowering or.
Correct, because they usually do it on a contingency basis, but at first they do a broad review that's free, but they do it under NDA to get.
So I don't know about the NDA piece because, but we should talk more about that and, because I've not heard of any libraries ever. Have any of the schools that you picked?
Yeah, not that I'm aware, yeah.
You know, maybe more private business, so I want.
Yeah, but it's certainly something to look at.
Because they do, what they do is they put the brokers or the incumbents in a position where they have to be a little bit more transparent because a lot's going on in that marketplace. Costs just skyrocket, so it's just something good to consider.
Yeah.
And then, and then the last one was your insurance in general. If you bring in a security system that can help you with intrusion management, a lot of things and could, in some respects, lower insurance premiums. The flip side is, is you talk about cybersecurity and that can be nebulous and with more security systems and stuff, that's also a vector for needing cybersecurity insurance, which causes it to go up. So.
So according to.
NVRs and cameras and stuff like.
Who was it that, what was the thing that Kelly and I just watched last week? Units of local government are the third most targeted after healthcare and yeah, and so we definitely are seeing more and more libraries getting hit, unfortunately. Luckily, OSG is on it with our stuff, but it's something that we're very, we have a much more heightened awareness of, unfortunately. Like when I started, we had just gotten cybersecurity and we were like, oh, we're so on the cutting edge, like look at us. And now it's like, we have to have this.
Yeah, it's a tricky one.
Yeah.
Great job.
Thank you.
I have a bit of a stupid question. So, so personnel, we did the salary, it went up by 14% and we increased overall by 3%. And everything you seem to be talking about are all increases.
No, that was last year. The 14% was last, was, was like this, was for fiscal year 24, Jamie.
Oh, okay, so we were able to absorb it. So now there's three, so we, okay, I got it. I was like, which one do we, do you like under 3%? Okay, okay, I got it now. Thanks.
Yeah, timing wise, last year we knew with the benchmarking, so we, Anna allocated almost half a million dollars more to account for it. We didn't, this year we're not able to do that, but we are able to still increase, like the levy overall was increased 3%, but we are able to set aside funds in order to make sure that we can still do some market adjustments as well as cost of living increases. Has really beautiful spreadsheets if you wanted to, they're very fun to look at, maybe just for me, but.
Any other questions, anything you'd like to see next month?
I would just like to ask that a topic as important as this, if we could put it earlier on the agenda, it would be much appreciated, really. I, it's, I'm less sharp and.
Next month will be old business, so it will be.
Okay. I mean, it's like, I want a B-shirt and I'm looking around at my colleagues yawning too, so.
We gonna have something, Jim?
No, I, I have a few questions that are more, just basic, like what's that term mean? And I thought maybe those could be done offline, I just gave you a call.
I love that. You can call me or email me and we can set a time.
That'd be great.
Stacy.
Thank you, Anna.
Thank you.
So it sounds like at the moment you're not going to be adjusting it for presentation next month unless.
I mean, unless you guys say something, I, I would be presenting the exact same thing next month.
Yeah.
Someone decides to drop like a million dollar bequest on us, now I can have to spend it in 60 days.
We look forward to seeing it next month.
Okay.
You're not going to be here next month.
I won't be.
Okay.
All right, the next item on the agenda is visiting the Glenview Library. And so Kate put in a little memo talking about wanting to try and maybe visit either Glenview or Deerfield to keep it local, to see what's going on in our neighboring communities. Glenview, you said, has had some recent, I'd say recent, like the past few years.
Yeah, they added a makerspace during the pandemic and.
Their building isn't that old, is it?
No, 10 years.
It was built when I was in Park Ridge, it's like 17 years old.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I know, time moves very quickly.
And it's more similar in size to ours, right?
Yes.
This is going to be.
Community, I mean, the, like the patrons, is it similar population or they?
The population is larger.
Yeah, Glenview's bigger.
I think it's like 50,000.
Oh, okay.
The building is about the same size.
Okay.
Their ceilings are taller, so it just looks bigger.
And Deerfield is, their library is certainly smaller.
And their community is about 19,000, so it's about half our size. Yeah, both are delightful. I've notified both directors and both are happy to have us. So either our, not saying we have to visit them.
Glenview seems like it might be just more relevant, just because the size is more similar.
Glenview, definitely, we share more patrons, people come back and forth more, more frequently between the two of us, so.
Your other thoughts, preferences?
I agree with Ma.
I think that would be great.
I'm into both, Glenview is much more interesting. I mean, don't tell the Deerfield.
I will tell them. It's okay. I am going to tease her that her high school students came to our board meeting and not hers, so.
It's on video, Jamie.
That's fine, I'll stand by my opinion.
I'm sure that the Deerfield board is watching this.
I know.
Oh, damn it.
So the next question is timing. Nimesh, how long are you out in March?
Just the week of this.
The meeting, okay. All right, so I wouldn't want to do it early March, I'm gone the last week of March, which is the week after you're done.
Yeah, that's spring break for.
Yeah, so it might be better to put it in April, but not during Passover or Easter.
Easter is at the end of March this year, so you can cross that off and then, or the eclipse. Oh, we can visit, no, I'm going to be in Carbondale and you're going to be in Indianapolis. We'll find, Jennifer will work her magic.
That'd be great.
Well, sometime in April, I guess. Is there any time that anyone else would be unavailable during April?
Yes, I'm in Arizona from the 12th through, I don't know, whenever I'm allowed to come back.
Is that the week of Monday?
It's a Friday, actually.
Friday.
I have little things, but I'm not going to tell anything, but yeah.
I'm going to just tell Jennifer, April or May.
Okay. May historically gets pretty crazy, but.
We shop for like early, right?
And you'll try and plan dinner afterwards somewhere along.
In Glenview?
Well, you probably can do it off the street somewhere.
I imagine we could, there's a lot of good restaurants, so.
You know where we should go?
Oh, that place that you just.
The new restaurant that opened on Waukegan, Fire and Time.
Pizza go, pizza.
Pizzano's, yes.
Oh, yeah.
It's, all right, it's wonderful.
We'll be going to.
Give them a plug, it's called Fire and Time. I would highly recommend.
There's going to be dinner afterwards to talk about what we just saw, but not as a board meeting, it's not public.
Well, no, it is, it is still technically part of a board meeting.
Technically public, somebody could come and sit next to us if we all ate.
If they really wanted to.
I thought we adjourned before we went to dinner last year.
Right?
I think we had, we did, because Abby and I were trying to leave and we had to come back upstairs. And then we didn't talk about the library visit at all.
No board meet, no.
Oh, because we didn't talk about the, okay, yes. If we talk about it, it has to be open.
We're going to adjourn at the library.
All right, so next item on the agenda is agenda building. For our March board meeting, we'll be having the annual review of non-resident fee methods. We'll be reviewing the draft strategic plan possibly, approving our annual fiscal year 25 budget. We'll be appointing a board nominating committee, so anyone who would like to be in the nominating committee for the next board, please come prepared to.
Just board officers.
Are the board officers going to be on the.
I don't know, they're just appointing board officers.
I understand that. I'm asking them to consider they want to be on the.
Okay, I thought you were saying you're appointing board members.
No.
Sorry, no, you guys all have to stay.
And then the room rental, public code of behavior and fines and fees policy updates, which the attorneys are still working on, so they weren't presented at this meeting. Anything else anyone would like to ask be added to the agenda? All right, hearing and seeing that, I will adjourn the meeting at 9:30.